I love doing that. I call this pre-meeting briefing of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6:00 PM on December 5th. The purpose of this pre-meeting briefing is to conduct a session with administrative staff regarding the posted agenda for the regular board meeting, which is scheduled for 7:00 PM tonight. For the record, board members present are Tara Hibachek, Kim Brady, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, Eliana Garza Rojas, Cassandra Hatfield, and me. I'm Randy Shackman. Next item on our agenda is Audience for Guests. We have no one who has signed up. There are no one for Audience for Guests, so we will go straight on to number three, which are the administrative reports. Dr. Eldridge?
Okay, our first, okay, our first report is from Dr. Stout on our purchase of iPads and Chromebooks.
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge, President Shackman, and members of the board. I'm here to present some additional information for you related to the consent agenda item related to iPads and Chromebooks. This is a slide. I pulled together a couple of slides with additional information for you. This slide outlines that the model of the iPads that we're seeking to replace with the requested 2,660 student devices are for the fifth and sixth generation iPads. As you can see, they will no longer receive iOS updates. We use our student devices until one of two, well, one of three things happens. One is it gets irreparably damaged and needs to be sent off to where the old devices go to die, when or when it will no longer receive software updates, or when we can no longer purchase parts for those devices. And so you'll see that we have a few of the fifth-generation iPads that are still floating around, and then mostly this is for our sixth-generation iPads that we're seeking to replace. And then also to replace iPads that are damaged and broken throughout the year, we're anticipating that that number is going to increase because we used to be able to replace a screen if a screen is broken on a device. And in the newer models of iPads, we're no longer able to do that the way it's integrated into the rest of the hardware. So now, when a child breaks a screen, we have to issue an entirely new device to them. If you'll notice that we're currently, those are the fifth and sixth-generation iPads. The iPad that Apple has out right now is 10th generation. So we use these things until we literally cannot anymore. For the Chromebook models, the Chromebook models is more of an issue of parts than it is software updates. Google will allow software to continue, the newer version of Chromes, to continue being installed on Chromebooks for seven to 10 years. However, for these three models, you'll notice that the first two models are five and seven years old, five and, yes, five and seven years old. And then the G3s are newer, however, HP is now up to the model G10, and so they know that they stopped manufacturing and stopped supporting replacement parts for those Chromebooks. If we can't buy replacement parts for them, then when a child breaks it, breaks a key, breaks a hinge, whatever, we can't get replacement parts for it. So we're seeking to request Chromebooks to replace those models that we have to phase out as we can no longer get parts for them. And I will be honored to answer or address any questions you may have.
Board members, any questions? I have a couple. And first, you know, and I apologize, I'm in the process of a move and didn't get Internet and have access to the board book and stuff, and all this. Is this budgeted from regular funds?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we will be using our regular annual budget. We're moving, moving a few things around, but yes, it'll be our regular budget.
Okay. And then Chromebooks versus iPads, are we staying the same way that iPads are being used up through a certain level, and then we're going to Chromebooks?
Yes. We did a stakeholder survey last year, and we asked about their devices and are they comfortable, and then also asking the teachers and campuses that they, they like the Chromebooks in grade, the transition of Chromebooks in grade two. And so students in grades pre-K through 1 are in iPads. We're anticipating also that our break-fix rate for the iPads will decrease now that this year we've moved to a cart-based model instead of sending iPads home with students below grade 3. When they're in a cart, they're not, they're less likely to get damaged in a backpack or, you know, thrown under the couch.
Great. Thank you very much. I know the kids get a lot of use out of that and a lot of support for our teaching staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I added item 5Q with Mr. Blackburn just to discuss the renovations for the locker room due to the increase in funding and just to talk about the schedule.
Good evening, President Shackman, Dr. Eldridge, members of the board. Just a quick review on this item. We originally, the board originally approved the authorization for renovations at Standard Stadium involving sports field lighting, natatorium locker room renovations, and for restroom renovations on the main concourse on the home grandstand. The reason this is coming back for additional authorization is the sports lighting vendor that we originally got pricing from would not honor their pricing that they submitted, and they came back and wanted an extra $1.2 million. So we got two additional quotes from different firms, along with photometric studies showing the lighting levels that the firms would produce with their equipment compared to the original quote. We feel like the vendor that we selected that's part of the proposal for you tonight provides better photometrics than the original vendor for significantly less cost. It'd be a savings of about $800,000 versus what we would have had to pay if we had stayed with the original vendor. The original vendor was the manufacturer of the lighting that's there now. The vendor that we're talking to is just going to replace the fixtures on the top of the poles. So happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Board members, any questions? Sir Hibachek?
Yeah, just original discussions had been that that lighting, and we are talking about the lighting at Standard, right?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay. So are we going to be, is it going to be ready by track season?
It will be tight. The advantage of not putting, another difference between what we're proposing now versus what was, what they wanted to charge an extra million dollars for is we're not adding poles. We're only replacing fixtures on the existing poles, which means it will be much less involved to get the new lighting up and running. So the lead times on the fixtures are to where they should be able to get the installation done once they start within a couple of weeks. So if they don't quite make it before track season starts, it should be, I would expect, no later than the end of February, based on what they told me.
Okay. I mean, I think it's, track season is the priority for that remodel.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Other questions? None. Mr. Byke, thank you very much. This brings us to item four on our agenda. The board members, are there any questions about or discussion for the consent agenda? No. Seeing none, we will move rapidly on to our last agenda item, which is adjournment, and I will call us adjourned at 6:09.
It's not the most, it's not the best at picking up. I tend to lean over it but you can hear yourself.
Okay.
You guys are professionals at this.
I'm loud so...
...
Okay, now we're gonna bang it again. Good evening, everyone. I call the regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD, Board of Trustees, to order at 7:00 PM here on December 5th, 2024. Board members, district staff, and members of the audience, you are free to join me in standing as Pastor Rob Lane from the Woodland Baptist Church provides us with a message, followed by the leading of the pledges. Carolyn Benavides leading us in the pledge to the U.S. flag in Eliana Garza Rosas, leading us in the pledge to the Texas flag.
Your gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you that you are in our presence right now, and that you give wisdom and discernment, Lord, and we also say thank you for sending Jesus Christ, the Savior of the world. Lord, tonight, there's many decisions that need to be made. There's going to be great discussion and talk. And, Lord, we pray that in the midst of all of that, that it is your glory of being represented. Lord, we pray that in the recognition of the awards that are being given. Thank you, God, for that we have so many talented individuals within side of this school district. And, God, I thank you for allowing all of us to be a part of a school district that wants to glorify you. Lord, we love you, and we thank you that you have us here tonight. Direct us in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. As a district, we dedicate all of our efforts and resources to our goal of high expectations for all. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see those deliberations, decisions, and action in an open session, with the exception of a few items which will be according to Government Code, Section 551, in closed session. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorneys, or real estate. For the record, tonight, board members present are Tara Habachek, Kim Brady, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, Eliana Garza Rosas, Cassandra Hatfield, and me. I'm Randy Shakman. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Before moving to the next agenda item, I will remind you that the board will accept comments from citizens in the district and from employees. Persons wishing to speak and audience for guests must have completed an online form for this purpose and submitted it with a posting deadline of 5:00 today. When the board addresses item, Agenda Item 3, audience for guests, you will be invited to the podium to speak. Next item on our agenda is item number 2, Special Presentations and Recognitions. I'm going to turn it over to Karen Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good evening, President Shakman, Dr. Eldridge, and members of the board. Tonight, we get to celebrate a recognition that we didn't get to celebrate last month, so I'm excited for this to be my first one. Through our partnership with Chick-fil-A at Trinity Mills, we have the opportunity to honor an individual with our CFB Champion Award, which recognizes teachers, employees, students, or community members for demonstrating excellence. The December CFB Champion Award is being presented to Arthur Mendez and the Valley Ranch Baptist Church for their continual support of all seven Westside campuses. For the past six years, they have supported CFB students in need during the holiday season. Valley Ranch hosts the Christmas store, where students get to eat, shop, and experience the season of joy. This year is no different. They will be helping make Christmas wishes come true for over 1,000 students. Please join me in congratulating and thanking our CFB champion, Arthur Mendez, and the Valley Ranch Baptist Church for supporting our students. Now, moving on to our student recognitions. Each fall, Yale University invites the top mock trial teams from around the nation to compete against each other to host the Yale Bulldog Invitational. Creekview High School is one of the few remaining public schools that attends the esteemed competition. This year, the Creekview High School Mock Trial Team racked up some big wins, snagging best witness in the nation titles on both the plaintiff and defensive sides of the case, and finishing 6th in the nation. We are so proud of what y'all have accomplished in this competition. I also know that in addition to that, after finishing 3rd out of 49 teams, these talented students just advance to compete in the YMCA Mock Trial State Competition, which will happen this spring in Austin. Please join me in applauding the award-winning Creekview High School Mock Trial Team. Hannah Anderson, Suzanne Batata, Casey Brady, Kelsey Hayes, Sung Min Hong, Jackson Hyde, and Ray Lee Lewis. Congratulations, and let's give them another round of applause. Board members, if you could please stand and move toward the center of the dais for a group photo. Parents, after our group photo, you can please make your way to the lobby to join your student. Congratulations, and good luck.
All of our board is so proud of these students, and Board Member Kim Brady has extra sense of pride because that Casey Brady that is on the team is her daughter, and we're proud of them all. I believe that concludes our recognitions for the evening, and President's remarks are next on the agenda. So, for 12:05, here are my thoughts. One of the items on our agenda tonight is the purchase of replacement iPads and Chromebooks. These important tools support classroom learning in many ways. With that being said, accidental and unfortunate things happen, and I want to strongly encourage all those watching on TV and all those who are here in the audience, and encourage your friends and neighbors to do the same. Consider getting coverage for this item. It is a website on our district website, and coverage is inexpensive, and it will provide a great deal of safety and security. And kids will be kids, so when something happens, it's a way to cover that. So, give some thought to that. Again, look at our website, CFBISD, and get more information. One of our community partners, Five Star Ford, who is very active in supporting the school district, is hosting a holiday blood drive on January 10th. Critical blood supplies always lag during the holidays. Personally, my mother's life was saved when I was a boy because she got the blood that she desperately needed from people who had donated it. I want to encourage all of us to plan to donate life-saving supply by supporting SamPAC's Five Star Ford on January 10th. A great CFB shout-out goes to our very own Board Member Carolyn Benavides and her many community volunteers, as they completed another successful Thanksgiving dinner for many of our community members here in the area. I understand that this year's program served 3,000 dinners on Thanksgiving. Congratulations, Carolyn, and to all your volunteers. Congratulations, Carolyn, and to all your volunteers. Finally, tonight, I want to formally make an announcement about the completion of our 2024 Carrollton Farmers Branch Legislative Priorities. This is a year that the state's biennial legislative session begins, and our legislative priorities will guide our advocacy efforts to encourage members of the Senate and the House to focus on public education. We, like most of our fellow districts throughout Texas, are struggling with finances and budget issues, and that's an issue that really can only be solved at the state legislative agenda. And so, I hope that you will all go online and look up our legislative priorities. We have a great opportunity to all get involved and encourage the state to do what it ought to do and fully fund and support public education. Thank you, and that's my remarks for this evening. Next, are there any committee updates from any of the Board members for tonight?
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to report on the Board Subcommittee, Governance Subcommittee of myself, Ms. Hatfield, and Ms. Barnes. We met on November 11th, really for two purposes. One, we had received a policy request, and we had review requests, and we had committed to meeting within two weeks when we received those requests, so we did that. We also went through our long list of items that we had been collecting for policy and Board Operating Procedure updates. We assigned those amongst each other, and that work has started, and we're wrapping it up for admin and legal review, and then submit for Board Approval. As well, we discussed the approach on the review of our strategic vision, and, you know, how we're going to move that work forward with the intent of getting our goals and our vision in place for the 2526 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Hrbachek. It sounds like you have been getting a lot of good work done. Other Board Members, Ms. Rojas.
I have an update on our Board Subcommittee, which is the Legislative Committee. Carolyn Benavides, President Shakman, and myself met on November 12th and December 4th, and we discussed our legislative priorities. We also roundtabled with Raise Your Hand Texas. And then, yesterday, we had an opportunity to meet once again, just to review our legislative priorities and get all of our meetings in order. I will say, you know, I'm really appreciative for our Subcommittee, because this takes a lot of work, and it really does take a village to get everything together and moving, and the planning has been perfect, so thank you, guys.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Rojas. Okay, then, our next item is District Announcements, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Eldridge.
Okay, I am so thankful for our season of giving and thanks to our great communities. So, and thank you, Ms. Benavides, for all the meals you served our community. We also had a day of giving at McWhorter and McCamey. We gave away 500 turkeys and meal boxes, because we have great partners in our community. In addition, the Daughters of the American Revolution, which I'm so proud that my grandmother was in that organization, so the State Chapter gave our students, they adopted 47 students, and they delivered all the gifts to Rainwater, so I think that is just another example of a great partnership. Teasdale Latin Foods, which is right down not too far from here, has donated bikes and toys and gifts for our students, and I think they're all in our communication office right now, and I know that there were some people that were like, maybe we should ride the bikes around our area to see if we could still ride them. But it just, it just shows you the power of our community and great giving. Another shout-out to Creekview, their high school moving ground dance company, and Newman Smith's motion dance. They were featured throughout the Experience Dance textbooks nationwide, so they came and took pictures of our dance companies. And it's amazing to see our students that represented in a nationwide textbook. You all know that safety is a top priority in our school district. It was so awesome. This month, our school district is featured in the Texas Safety Newsletter. We did a PSA announcement with Carrollton, Dallas, Farmers Branch, and Irving Police Departments, and within two days, we had over 4,100 views of our PSA. And so, now, we are in the running for the statewide award, so we're super excited about that. I think that there's just great things happening, and I think there's two more weeks until the holiday break, so we are so thankful for our community, giving to our students and families.
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge. And now, we're going to have an update from PTA, and I believe that's Ms. Nunez.
Dr. Eldridge, President Shakman, and the esteemed Board, I'm Deanna Nunez, and I'm the second VP of Membership for the PTA Council Board. Let's start with our PTA motto, "To make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children." Our district membership is growing. We currently have 5,734 members. We still need about 723 members to reach our number from last year. We encourage you all to join your local PTA, become a CFB ISD PTA Champion that supports multiple PTAs across our district. Right now, we currently need two more Champion memberships, wink, wink, if anybody wants to join, to beat our total from last year and increase it. Thank you to all those that have joined our Champion memberships. To, if you need any information, please go to our CFBPTA.org website for more information. So, I'm going to talk about our coveted Golden Apple Award. The Golden Apple Award is given to PTAs who have received 100% of their full-time staff to join their local PTA. For council, the award is given to our, for the school board and our superintendent and direct reports, if they have joined. Guess what? We have now received our Council PTA Golden Award, Golden Apple Award. So, I'm pretty honored to have you guys all members of our PTA. Principals, don't worry, you still have time. The submission is due December 15th, so talk to your PTA. Our next big event is our Reflections Art Contest. The theme this year is Accepting Imperfection, and we have received over 150 submissions that are advancing to the council level from across the district. We look forward to celebrating our winners on January 15th at the Nancy Watten Center. Our next delegate meeting is also held then. A big program that we have this year that we are promoting is the Pulse Patrol Stories. This is to promote student safety by fostering a positive community relationship with our first responders, which is a great deal, considering we're up for an award for their PSA. This will be a K through 8 event on March 1st. It will be held at Creekview, and its showtime is at 1:00 PM. This month, we conducted a membership challenge for November. The November Challenge was our Shining Star Award. The Shining Star Award is for those that have increased their PTA membership to 101% past last year's membership. This year, we had 12 PTAs that qualified for this award. We chose one elementary and one secondary out of the 12. Our elementary school award goes to McCamey Elementary. Our secondary school winner is Polk Middle School. For our December Challenge, we are going to ask that PTAs and local schools submit their best and most creative end-of-year events, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nunez. And now, an update from our Educational Foundation. I'll turn it over to Donna Wall and Company. And Company.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dee. Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, and President Shakman, and esteemed School Board Members. During this season of giving, I come before you tonight, celebrating our annual tradition of offering gifts from the Education Foundation. In 2021, the Ed Foundation committed to a new program, a new program that was inspiring innovation, creativity, and novel programs throughout the, throughout the school districts, classrooms, and campuses. The Innovative Grant Program is a deal maker. It is a difference maker, and thanks to you, and to you, and to you, and to you, and also thanks to our Innovation Academy members, we've been able to build on this program. It's a big deal. Since 2021, the Innovation Academy, the Innovation Grant Program, has delivered $130,000, just over, directly to the school district, impacting thousands of students in classrooms and across campuses, and numerous departments. I think it's worthy to note that the Innovation Grant Program is open to any CFB employees, so all CFB employees can apply for the Innovation Grant Program. Funding for the Innovative Grants is providing important pathways for our community and for our business community to connect with and support the school district. I speak on behalf of the Ed Foundation, on behalf of my directors, and share just how grateful we are to be able to play a role in helping build partnerships. So, tonight, without further ado, we'd like to present you with a check for $37,276 to fund new projects. I'm going to ask you guys to come on forward. Thank you. I think it's important to note that this is only one of our programs, so we fund in a variety of different ways. This is but one. And never one to break a secret or spoil a surprise, but we'll have more information about the Innovative Grants in the weeks to come. Wink, wink, wink. If you know, you know, as they say. Happiest of holidays from your Education Foundation, and thank you all for entrusting us and for your continued support. So, thank you. We'd like to take a second, get everybody in a picture, so if I can get Mary and the Education Foundation Directors to come forward, step forward with the check. Trustee Garza Rojas, Ms. Garza Rojas, and Ms. Benavides, if I can have you all join us below the dais. And district senior leaders, and President Shakman, you all are in perfect place, so we thank you, and again, we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Ms. Wall, and to the Board Members from the Education Foundation who joined us tonight, and thank you on behalf of all of our students and all of those who will receive benefit from such a wonderful, wonderful gift. And what a great time of year for such a gift. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 3, Audience for Guests. We do have a couple of people who have signed up for Audience for Guests, and before we begin, I will remind Audience Members of the Board Procedures for handling Audience for Guests. Anyone interested to speak in person during Audience for Guests must have electronically submitted a form and listed the topic they wish to discuss by the 5:00 PM deadline for the form submission. Each speaker will be allowed to speak once during the Audience for Guests. Stakeholders will be allowed a maximum of three minutes, and speakers designated non-stakeholders, those who live outside the district area, will be allowed a maximum of one minute to address the Board. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, please note that the Board is not allowed to respond publicly, directly to any speaker, and they will address any agenda items that are deemed necessary when they are listed only on the agenda. The timer will begin when shown on the screen in front of you, when you arrive at the podium and begin to speak. Again, the speakers' presentations will be limited to the allotted time. We have two speakers in order of submission. The first is Nicholas Ornellis. I don't actually see him. Mr. Ornellis? I don't see him. While they're looking for him, I'm going to go ahead and go to our second speaker, and that is Mr. Mike Kinnifer.
Well, President Shakman, and Dr. Eldridge, and honorable Board, my name is Mike Kinnifer, and I'm here because I'm excited that a few weeks ago, and actually several weeks ago, you nominated me by open resolution to be a nominee for the Dallas County Appraiser District's Board of Directors. And those nominations were collected, and a ballot was formed by the Chief Appraiser. That ballot went out, and it's now time to vote based on the nominees on that ballot. So, I'm here to thank you for nominating me, and secondly, to ask for your vote. Why do I want to be on the Board, and why do I think I could do a good job? Well, one of the reasons I want to be on the Board is I do think that I could do a good job. Somebody's got to set that thing up, or I'll speak the whole night. In 1991, I was, I started a company called Corporate USA Real Estate Services. Since then, we've managed 30 million square feet of commercial property. During that time, I did personally handle many appraisal valuation protests, both formal and informal, and even initiated several lawsuits. I understand the appraisal process. We've hired a lot of property managers in our day, and a good property manager finds problems before they get big and kills them. That's what I hope I can do on the Board of Directors. I'm a big proponent of school districts. School districts have too many unfunded mandates. It's a shame that teachers don't get raises. I've knocked on, over the years, maybe over the last 10 years, I've probably knocked on, I don't know, many thousand doors. You are the largest employers in the cities, and we come across teachers of all times, all the time. They are dedicated people that teach because they believe in the kids, and they deserve increase, so I believe in that fully. I think vouchers are bad for public schools. There's one more problem. Find problems and fix it. This is a big problem, and I don't know how to fix it, but I'm willing to tackle it. The Appraisals District is asking for large increases. They say they're, they don't have enough appraisers. They're asking for 20% increases across the Board. That comes to you as a 20% increase, but you don't have increasing revenue, so how do you handle a bill from the Appraisals District for 20% increase when you don't have them? That's a problem. And so, as a Board of Director, I would hope that I could, I don't, I don't know how to fix it, but I'm not afraid of fixing things that look hard, and I want to try to fix that. So, I could go on. I really am excited about being on the Board. I think I can do a job, and I would really appreciate your votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kinnifer. Mr. Ornellis.
Appreciate y'all giving me another chance when I didn't hear you the first time. I'm Ms. Nicholas Ornellis, address 1117 East Friendgood Drive. I'll start with addressing Agenda Item 5S, the November Official Minutes. I noticed that there was no mention of your decision to reduce each speaker's allotted time by 33% during the Audience For Guests. While that's innocuous, it's a little puzzling if you compare that to the minutes from October, when there was an op-ed submitted for the, for the October Official Minutes, when there's an entire play-by-play analysis of the ringer that y'all sent me through that night, including how long the exact time that I spent speaking. So I just, it's a little confusing, like the difference. Like I said, it's not that big of a deal. There was also an explanation as to why I wasn't permitted to speak during the Audience For Guests. It stated that you had to consult with your lawyer, as I mentioned in the last meeting. It's pretty common. I don't understand why you couldn't have provided me that answer when I inquired three weeks prior to those minutes being released. It's just simple communication, and that seems to be the reoccurring theme with this district, and that started back in May, when I asked y'all for help, and the only information that I was provided as to why you were firing me was because it was best for the district, and to this day, that's still your answer. So, on that note, I'm still confused as to how it was best for the district to fire me when, we have Joe Lapuma over here, our Chief of School Leadership, right, who spoke last, last board meeting. He said that I'm needed here, that I'm a great teacher. Chad Hunter also said that multiple times throughout the entire year, including on April 2nd, 2024. He said I could go anywhere I wanted to. And then, because that's prior to when y'all terminated me, right? Brian Mosh and I had a conversation out here on September 5th, where he told me he's only heard great things about me. He complimented my intelligence. He also tried to persuade me to go to another district, and how he would advocate for me, right? Why would you want to push me out if that's how you feel? So it's just really confusing. Why I'm here, though, is for the external investigation. I think that should happen, and you can use the investigation that y'all voted on for me. Give it to the public. I waive my confidentiality. Be transparent, right? Show them your decision, how you made your decision, you voted to approve it. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ornellis. That's all the speakers that I have been given for Audience For Guests, and so that would lead us to our next agenda item, which is Item Number Four, the Non-Auction Item for Discussions. First up is attendance, an enrollment update with Dr. Lance Hamlin.
Doctor, excuse me, Dr. Eldridge, Mr. Shackman, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight and to share our enrollment update. The first couple of slides that I would like to present, it's really about going down memory lane, and really how we got here this year. This is the timeline that we used for our registration campaign last year, and I'm just going to touch on a couple of things, because the registration process is a lengthy process. It's a process that involves many, many departments, as well as all of our campuses. As you can see, the process for this school year, it started back last, in the fall, right? So we had the opportunity to have our eighth graders decide what kind of programs they wanted for the programs of study. That happens all the way back in last November. You jump to December, we had an opportunity to do our educational planning guide updates. All this is part of how we really get to that registration process. Then we do that marketing phase in January. We had the high school preview nights, as well as in February, we had the fifth grade trips to the middle school campuses. And all this time, we are promoting what we're doing at our campuses for our kids and across the district. In March, we started with the middle school parent previews that we have every year. We had the eighth grade visits to the high school campuses, and then we had an incredible collaborative opportunity to create that marketing campaign for registration, which was the Fast Pass. We started pushing that in April. We opened up that registration window for the Fast Pass that went from April 1st to April 30th, and we had that one bonus day in May, which was May 19th. And then, as you know, we did several registration events throughout the summer. We did a couple in June, we did three in July, and then we had the one in August. And this is just to show that there's so much that goes into getting ready and having that registration opportunities for our students. Now, going back to the, what I think was an absolutely incredible collaborative opportunity and experience that included many departments, as well as all of our campuses, and that was the creation of the Fast Pass. When we went and created the Fast Pass, that included not only student services, but our communications team. It also included departments like Fine Arts, Student Nutrition, Technology, and Athletics, because they were all part of this massive incentive process. Paired with all of our registration events that we had, the two in June, the three in July, and the one in August, that gave us the opportunity to show you numbers that are just absolutely impressive. As you can see, early registration, we've had early registration for many, many years, but we really haven't counted the numbers that we did this year. If you look, in '22, '23, we had 2,250 students that went through the early registration process. That means from April to June 1st, they have completed all the documents required to register for the next school year. Last year, once again, we had about 2,400 students, which is an average of about 10% of our enrollment number each year. So that's what we've averaged until the Fast Pass, until the collaborative efforts of all the departments that came together and really pulled off to what I think was absolutely amazing accomplishment. We had 12,000 students that actually registered for, did the early registration process from April 1st until June 1st. Almost 50% of the kids that are in our school right now went through that early registration process. We typically average 10% each year. So this is a, this is a pat on the back to the entire district, patting them back to every department and every campus that was involved, and celebrated, and really getting these kids ready for the new school year. Because when we get these numbers in early, that allows us to make decisions regarding staffing and things that we need to make sure our kids have what they need for that first day of school. Now, it's about the historical snapshot enrollment counts. So if you see, I kind of shifted my verbiage. We're talking about registration, now we're about enrollment. Because the registration process is really about the documents that parents need to fill out in order for, to tell us that, hey, we plan on our students attending one of your schools. They're now enrolled, they're actually in a seat. That's when their enrollment kicks in. So they're not enrolled until the first day of school starts. The state didn't look at them as being enrolled until they actually show up to school. So as you can see on our snapshot date, every year in October, the last Friday of October is a snapshot date. This year, we had 24,230 students that were enrolled, compared to last year, 24,381 students. Yes, that's a decrease. 151 students. But I'm going to stand here today and say, this is a celebration, because we were able to hold on to 99.38% of our students that attended last year, number wise anyway. When you look at the districts that neighbor us, like Capel, they lost 1.14% of their enrollment from last year to this year. Lewisville, 2.7%. Irving, 3.5%. We're looking at 2/3 of 1%. What an incredible accomplishment, being able to hold on to our kids for this school year. Yes, it's a decrease, but it is a time for us to be able to celebrate. Want to take a real quick deep dive into our numbers, enrollment numbers, across the district by grade level. I kind of shared this, this chart with y'all last year, but this is obviously with the new numbers, and it's really important to look at not how many first graders we had last year compared to how many first graders we have this year. It's about how many students in the grade level last year came back to us this year. And so I just kind of highlighted a couple of the grade levels. As you can see, last year, first grade, we had 1,895 students. This year, in first, second grade, we have a decrease of 82 students. We're at 1,813. I'll tell you right now that we're looking to find out where these kids went, and looking for that why. We don't have that information for you tonight. We won't have it until February, because we need to do, complete our PIM submission that happens in January, and we'll be able to know where these kids actually landed. You look at our fifth grade numbers. Fifth grade, last year, 1,819 students. This year, in sixth grade, 1,649. We lost 170 students. Now, this is a concern that we've had in CFP for the past 10 to 15 years. Students that are in fifth grade and not coming to our middle school campuses. The odd thing, if you look, once they come into our middle school campuses, they don't leave. If you look at our sixth grade numbers last year, 1,533, we actually had an increase in the seventh grade numbers this year. Our seventh grade numbers from last year, we had an increase in seventh grade this year. We are currently working on reaching out to our families in the elementary level to create, we're going to create a survey to try to find out exactly what they're looking for in a middle school program. And that way, we can hopefully mitigate some of that loss in the future. And then you look at our eighth grade students, 1,690 students last year, and then a whopping 2,000 students in ninth grade this year. And we know that is because we do offer, and we do promote at a high level, the incredible CTE programs we have at our high schools, as well as our academies. But this has always been our trend, our kids come back. But we need to continue to create a better opportunity for our kids in middle school to where we can mitigate, mitigate that loss. This slide here represents our district transfers. And as you can see, over the past three years, the blue bar, it represents the transfers into CFP. In 2022, '23, we had 1,274 students that transferred into CFP compared to 12,000, 1,245 last year. But as you can see this year, we had a significant increase. We know that we are serving 1,415 students that do not live in CFP. They've transferred from other districts to us. Now, the, obviously, the elephant in the room is that gigantic red bar over the past couple of years. Those are the kids that transfer out of CFP. Almost 16, or 4,650 students transferred out of CFP in '22, '23 compared to almost 4,800 students last year. This year, we do not have those numbers at this time. We are waiting for our PIM submission in January. We'll have those numbers vetted, and we'll have all that from TEA, and I'll be able to provide that in a board memo for you in February. I did provide a board packet for you tonight that you should have, that shares some information regarding the students that have left us for charter schools. Do they have that? Okay. So yeah, you should have that with you. So we know that those large red bars, most of those students, they're not leaving for other ISDs, they're not leaving for other, or high numbers, I should say, or high numbers for private schools. They're leaving for charter schools. And so in your board packet, you should have exactly what charter schools they're attending over the past two years, and then once again, when we get our numbers back from our PIM submission in January, we'll be able to share in a board memo in February where those kids are this year. I do think it's important to state that, you know, through student services and across our district, it is that having the mindset that never stop improving. Everything that we do, every process that we run, when we're finished with that process, we do what we call an after-action review, and we've been doing that throughout this year, not only through our attendance campaign, our enrollment campaign, but even through our truce and tribunals that we're going through now. But as you can see here, also, we are really, really working hard to make sure that we are working with our campuses through what we're calling our enrollment-focused think tanks. We've started it last month. We met with a group of principals, we'll continue to meet with principals monthly, on how can we help them increase their enrollment, not only at their campus, but how they can help us increase the enrollment across the district. We're also dedicated and really committed to making sure that our registration, enrollment, and transfer processes are aligned with the new facility study that we ended our last meeting last night, and then once we have the opportunity to kind of get all that information together, we will have an effective and efficient process that will be aligned with the information gathered from that facility study. We continue to have a very strong relationship with our Health Services Department in making sure that we are offering all the vaccination opportunities for our families. That's a huge need. I know Ms. Sleek works very hard to make sure that happens. Student Services also this year has the responsibility and the opportunity to monitor the teacher-student ratio across all elementary campuses and every classroom. And we've done a really, really good job of making sure that anytime that we get to a point to where we see that ratio is in jeopardy, we work with our HR department and the campus administration to make sure that we provide the necessary resources that campus needs for that specific classroom. And then we have a great, obviously, relationship with our Operations Department and Transportation, and a good example of that is when we had to move a program from one campus to another campus this year, working with Transportation to make sure our students had that transportation need taken care of on the very first day when we moved that program. Our goal is always, no matter what the educational environment is across the nation, across Texas, our goal here in CFP is always to increase our enrollment, no matter what. And we know we have a hard road to toe in the future, because the enrollment trend's going down. We're just making sure that we continue to work hard with our Communications Department, with our CNI Department, with Special Services, and just promoting the programs that we have at every single level, elementary, middle, and high school. And once again, I think a big thing that we're going to be doing this year is having that response from our parents through our elementary survey on what they're really wanting to see at the middle school level, so we can hopefully mitigate the loss that we've been experiencing at that middle school level. And then once again, continue to have those enrollment think tanks with our campus leaders. This is a tentative timeline for our registration in this upcoming year, and it's extremely tentative, because we know everything that's been going on, especially with our facility study. As you can see, in February, we'll definitely be kicking off with our advertising and our marketing campaign for the registration process, open up those application windows like we do every year, example being our STEAM gifted Talented Program at Landry, the dual-language at program at Thompson and Stark. And then really, when you move into April and May, it's really about making sure that the registration and the transfer processes that we are going to be having during that time is completely aligned with the facility study. And so, we don't have all that information yet, but just know that we're already working on that, and we'll see what that's going to look like based on the information we got from the facility study. And then, as you know, we're going to continue with our registration extravaganza events. They've been very successful for the past two years, so we will continue to do that, looking to have six to eight different nights that we'll be able to serve our community. And then I always like to finish with takeaways. You know, I'm proud of the 24,230 students. We want more, and we will get more. That's our goal. That's going to, we're always going to strive for that. And then that just leads into also being able to retain 99.38% of our students that were here last year. I think it's important that, I continue to say it as many times as possible, we will have an effective and efficient registration and transfer process that will be aligned with our facility study, and then that collaborative process that we've created with Central Office, all departments, and our campus principals to help us in that process, because they are part of the solution. And then, obviously, I always want to just take a second to say- And then obviously, I always want to just take a, a second to say that the Central Registration Center that we've run through, E S T C this year, has been extremely successful. Extremely busy from April first all the way to the end of September, registering kids. We, we would have a complete packed office, uh, over at E S T C, uh, through that time. But even after September, end of September, we're having families come through every single day, registering or having the opportunity, as you know, with the parent, uh, education classes that we're running, which is also a, a great way for us to promote our district. Uh, we had, uh, over a hundred and ninety, uh, families sign up for the English classes that we just started offering two weeks ago. Uh, we only had room for seventy, but we're looking to add additional sessions. So that's just another way that we're promoting the incredible things that we are offering here in C F B. And that's another way we're going to keep families here because we're not only meeting the needs of our students, we're meeting the needs of the entire family. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. So I assume that those enrollment numbers include our newcomers?
Yes.
Do we have a newcomers number?
To?
For the, for the district?
Absol, well, absolutely. Th- this year alone, we had right at nine hundred and fifty students that have enrolled newcomer-wise. The past two years, it were right at two thousand.
Okay. Thank you. And so what new, um, events and incentives do you have planned for this coming up school year for registration and enrollment?
We're, we're in the middle of just thinking about what we can do. We, we would like to follow something like we did this past school year because I think now is expected because it was so successful. Uh, but we're in the planning phases, so.
Okay. You get back to us on that one?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
I feel like I'm in school.
You are.
Um, yes, great report. Thank you so much. Um, I was thinking about the, um, Ranchview area. I visit over there quite a bit and thinking about instead of reaching children in fifth grade, maybe start earlier. I mean, do you have a plan or do y'all do that? Visit, take them to Barbara Bush or bring Barbara Bush to them?
We, we typically do that with fifth grade, but we really want to start finding out from our parents because we know that many of our kids actually leave before fifth grade. So we really want to be able to look at, uh, uh, find out what, really from third grade on. Um, that's the conversations we're having now. Uh, but the only students that we kind of send over right now are our fifth grade students. But we always encourage our, uh, elementary kids and give them the opportunity to go see musicals and things like that at the high school, uh, and get connected to not only the middle school, but the high school as well.
And regarding Barbara Bush, um, during their P T A meetings, maybe incorporate the elementary school parents to come over? I mean, I know they have great programs over there and, uh, you know, parents don't know about that.
Yeah, absolutely. We could definitely talk with Ms. Tilly and, uh, get some things going because she's doing a great job over there. She's really made some great connections with the community.
Thank you.
Board procedure is that she doesn't talk again until.
All right. So I have, um, I have a question for you regarding the parent survey. So I guess my question is, what is the purpose of the parent survey? And up to bounce off of what Ms. Benavita said, is it geared towards a certain grade level of parents?
We're, we're in the process of creating that survey now, right? So it's in the discussion phase, the creation phase. And it's typically going to be for our parents that, for our kids, third grade and up. Because we want to find out why they're, why they're leaving. What are they really wanting to see for their student in the middle school educational experience? We, we want to, to see how we can mitigate them leaving and not even giving us a chance. Because once again, like I showed in the chart, if they come in sixth grade, they don't leave. It's just getting them to come in sixth grade. We, we had a significant number, a hundred and seventy students that did, they chose to go elsewhere. And so we want a survey that will help us kind of find out exactly why they're leaving and what we can do, uh, to keep them here. Because the parent, parent's voice is extremely important. Now, we also do our parent previews for middle school as well, uh, and giving the, our elementary families the, the opportunity to come up and see what's happening on at the middle school. Uh, but we want to hear, we want to hear from the parents. We want to give them an opportunity to speak with their words and so we can see if we can keep them here. Because right now they're speaking, that's just with their feet, they're walking away.
Okay. My other question was, you mentioned that there were some English classes provided to about seventy people. I know multiple signed up. How is that marketed towards our community?
Well, we didn't even really honestly get a chance to, to advertise. Uh, it was word of mouth. If people heard, we were about to do this. And then before we even sent it out district-wide, we already had, once again, a hundred and ninety parents that had contacted us uh, to say, hey, we want to be in, in, in the class. Uh, and so we had to cut it, we didn't even get a chance to, to celebrate and send it out because we had already had, the request was far more than what we could actually handle. Uh, we are, we are working right now to see if we can add a few more sess, sessions. And then if we can get, get that done, we'll be able to market it again. But we, we do it every Tuesday in the morning, I believe it's at eight o'clock to nine o'clock, uh, or nine-thirty. And then we do it every, uh, Tuesday and Thursday morning and at night. And those sessions are full.
Okay. Is there a plan to do a, a recording of some sort or to provide it in an additional manner? I don't know what these classes look like, which is why I'm asking.
Uh, well, they're English classes, the, the ones that you, we're talking about now. Uh, we have not had any conversations about recording any of the classes. Uh, but we're also looking to add more English classes as well as, uh, financial, uh, literacy classes and wellness classes. Uh, but taking the baby steps. This is the first time we've done this. So once again, it's been very successful. We're about three weeks in. Uh, and you know, we'll, we'll see. The funding is extremely important. So we're trying to secure funding for additional sessions for the English classes first.
Awesome. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Hamlin, for your presentation. Um, this evening I heard some things like after-action reports, connecting with administrators, specifically principals. And I really appreciate that. I think they are an extremely valuable asset and the more that we engage with them, um, the more they can help us. And so I really just want to say thank you for engaging the principals in this work because I think it's critical that their voice be at the table. Um, so that was just a, an observation. Um, and then echoing on to what Ms. Brady said about the, um, enrollment, it is very good news that we are retaining ninety-nine point three eight percent. I also see if there are nine hundred and fifty newcomers in that, that this chart may not actually show us if we're keeping our students versus are the students in the chart the newcomers. So I would like to request that we have that chart separated out so that we can actually look beyond this of, is it the newcomers that are keeping our enrollment? And it's the dips are only in certain places, or are we actually losing students? Um, more students than we actually realize. And I'm sure you have some information on that.
And we could definitely take a deeper dive into that and provide information on it later date for sure.
That would be great. Um, and then my last, um, note was, when is the survey, I know you said you're in the planning phases, but I'm hopeful that the survey's going to go out sooner rather than later.
Uh, we're thinking May. No, I'm just kidding. We, we, we want to get that out hopefully in January, early January.
That's great because that means it can have implications for this year.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Barnes?
Thank you so much for this. Um, always very interesting. Um, I have a question about, um, the advertising and marketing that's being done for incoming students. Um, in terms of, you know, our younger children going into kindergarten or pre-K. What does that look like? Do you, you know, go to preschools? How, what is the advertising and marketing that's done? Is it dependent on people just hitting the website or knowing that they're in the district, or are you guys going out?
Well, one, that's a very good question. Uh, two, you know, based on having, we, we have someone that's new to our, uh, communications department. So we haven't actually met on exactly what that new marketing is going to look like. So that's going to be part of our process. And so I really can't answer that question with, you know, as deep as I need to go uh, because we have a completely new department and, uh, but it's really, it's really about just sharing, like I said earlier, the programs that we have for our, our kids because they're viable programs, they're successful programs. Uh, but we'll be working with our communications department to, to have that marketing set in firm and, and ready to go.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Um, thanks for the information. I just want, you know, for, um, you know, priority and, and consensus. I want to, um, echo Ms. Hatfield's, um, comments and Ms. Brady just regarding the newcomer data. I mean, I think that's an important analysis, especially leading into, um, you know, surveys, survey data, and what we need to do as far as finding out some of the whys. Then, uh, for some of the other comments, and, and as Dr. Hamlin referenced in his presentation, um, these numbers as far as, uh, fifth to sixth grade, um, is not a surprise. Um, this is a trend that we've seen for many years in C F B I S D. Many things have been tried year to year, um, to work on this. Um, but, but I want to clarify that th, th, this is not isolated to a single campus that might or might not be mentioned here tonight. This is a, a C F B, um, issue. So, um, I, I just.
Absolutely.
I just want to clarify that. That's a, a C F B issue, not specific to a middle school campus.
Correct.
Ms. Brady?
Now, I was just going to comment that those, this, the grades that you had pointed out, where we seem to have trouble keeping our kids or coming back to our kids, those are all parents' decisions. And so if we have somehow can reach out to our parents in a, um, more communicative way and get them more involved earlier in those decisions, because those are all, those are when the parents are making the decision, including pre-K and K. Um, but certainly in sixth grade, going to sixth grade. So that's a, if we can open our campuses up, um, even more freely for parents to come up and see that it's not a scary place, even though it is middle school, which some people think is scary. Um, I, it's, those are great, great schools and same with our high schools, but parents are afraid of what they don't know. And so if we could just open that up, tours as often as possible for our parents to get into those campuses would be super helpful.
And you're right. It's about relationships. We want our administrators at the middle school level to have relationships with those elementary students and parents. So it's about being in front of them and it's about starting building that relationship because principals are extremely powerful. Uh, they really are. Their administrative team and staffs are extremely powerful in the enrollment numbers as well as the retention numbers. Uh, because when, when parents really appreciate and respect the principal, uh, and that administrative team, they stay or they want to go. You're right? So you're a hundred percent spot on.
And I think you're exactly right about the relationships. And the sooner that our pa, our younger parents can get involved and understand and meet these people that work at these big scary schools, then they'll be less scared to go and, and to try it out. So just, just, and I know you all are thinking about it, but if we can open it up year-round for our parents to feel invited to come to our schools, that would be hugely helpful.
Ms. Hatfield?
Um, I completely agree with Ms. Brady. I mean, having had multiple board members, they either have a middle schooler that are in our schools or have had a middle schooler in our schools, our middle schools are not scary. They're places where great teachers work and great administrators are doing amazing things. And I would say you might even consider surveying your students. Because I, I mean, I have a middle schooler and I can tell you, they talk about their middle school. And so they might be able to lend a hand in this, how do we keep kids? Because those fifth graders are talking to their parents. They're going and they're, they're saying, I heard this about this school. And then the parents are, their wheels are turning and they get nervous. So you might think about also engaging the students in this conversation because they probably have some pretty good ideas too.
Absolutely.
So just an idea.
Ms. Barnes?
Just building off of what they've said, also as the parent of middle schooler, high schooler, and elementary schooler. Um, I would also encourage that conversation to start much earlier than fifth grade. I think it needs to start, parents are starting to ask questions and look at schools starting as early as second and third grade. They're looking forward. Um, in sixth grade, they're looking at the high school. And so when you're looking at parent surveys, parent education about middle school, start it a lot earlier than fifth grade. Because at fit, by fifth grade, parents have kind of already made their choices. Um, and I love the preview nights, or previews that we do with the students. Um, and they're great. I think they open our students' eyes. But like we've, you know, mentioned, and I think you mentioned something like this too, we need to open the parents' eyes. The decisions are from them. Um, so I'm, I'm very excited to see how all this proceeds and, yeah, this is great.
And we do plan on doing the survey starting in third grade. I don't know if I was clear on that, but it's definitely going to be third grade and up.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Hamlin, thank you for your report and. Yeah, um, okay. I was going to cut the discussion off on this item and get ready to move along. We have a, a long agenda left on ourselves. So again, thank you, Dr. Hamlin, very much. I'm going to suggest, board, that we take a five-minute recess, stretch your legs, do whatever, but I want to keep it to five minutes. And, uh, we have. The board demographers are going, I think I put it off again, but, uh, we're going to take a five-minute recess. I just need to stretch.
Which one's the two?
This is the two.
Okay.
We call these our golden locks maps. They're not too little and not too big. So, yeah, um, they've been sending us three. We really only need one. We'll give you this one too, very minute. It's just your.
I know my holder, show up, we can get it up here on the dais.
There are copies of that in here.
In the binder.
But they're so little and you got to flip to the right, you know, so we like it that way.
This is, this is my favorite map. I love this.
It's everybody's favorite map. Our G I S guys think we're crazy.
But when I drive the district, I need the big map.
Yes.
I call this regular meeting of the Board for Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD back into session at 8:10 PM. Our next item on the agenda is 4B, a report from our demographer, Chris, Mr. Moore, I believe we're going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Shackman, trustees, Dr. Eldridge. Work has been underway the past several months on the district's demographic study. We have partnered with population and survey analysts for this year's report, and they work with fast-growth districts, stabilized districts, districts that are in the midst of stabilizing, which is always a challenge, slow-growth districts, declining, all sizes, all shapes across the state of Texas. They are well-versed in what they do. It would be hard-pressed to find another group that is as skilled and adept and in tune with the numbers as PASA is. They have been working with us since at least September to collect and study data sets. They gathered current and past student population analysis, housing projections, they've worked with all of the cities within our district, working with the cities, the departments there, studied economic trends, real estate trends, and how these numbers impact both CFB as a whole and then within our specific attendance zones. And so you all know better than most that long-term planning is key. Our last demographer's report was October of '22, and so we want and we need the most comprehensive, the most recent, and the most accurate data in order to plan long-term. And so the October '24 snapshot data was key for this, and so we appreciate the legwork they did before gathering, when that came out, and then pushing through to get this to you tonight after that snapshot data became available. Because the demographics data you'll see here tonight is going to combine with the criteria that's been established by the facilities planning advisory group. And as we continue working through the progressions of campus consolidation, and we're going to bring you all a comprehensive proposal of all of this in February, and this is key, a key part to that. So with that, I want to introduce Chris Poole and Susan Cates from PASA, and I will turn the lectern over to them.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Shackman, Board members, Dr. Eldridge. That was a great intro, so I don't have to say all that much. We are from College Station, population and survey analysts, and we hope to give you a bit of an overview. I see you all thumbing through the copy of the report that you have there. We saw your agenda, so we do hope to keep this kind of high-level and give you a bit of an overview. But hopefully this data, like you said, will be used by your committee moving forward, and I expect a whole lot of back and forth between us and the administration here over the next couple of months. But to give you an idea of the process, like you said, we started in about September. We start gathering and collecting background data. Some of that may be census data or American Community Survey data. But one of the things that's very, very important is that we start building an extremely robust GIS map. And we've provided the district with large copies of that map, and I hope you all see it. We provide every district with about 10 copies or so, and I got a request just yesterday from a district that had just gotten them, and they want seven more. You know, they give them to their police department, and they give them to all these departments because they're very detailed, and it's very important for us to understand what the lay of the land is in the district itself. We have to study economic and housing data. Are you going to have regeneration? Are you going to have new homes? Are they single-family, multifamily? And so Susan will be speaking to that a lot. We study your past and your current student population. We geocoded a couple of sets of student data from you guys. You'll see here in a minute, the kids pop up like little dots all over the map. But we want that history also, because we want to understand what's going on in your existing subdivisions. How does kindergarten move to first grade? How does K4 become 1-5 the next year? And so that is very important for us. We generate the projections under three scenarios, a 10-year assessment that we start with, but we also sort of have a low and a high, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And then we can take that data, and the way we have it gathered, we gather it down to little planning unit levels, sort of little puzzle pieces that we'll see in a minute, and that way we can do things. We combine it into your current zones, and then we can break it apart into new zones and move things around and do that long-range planning. But we'll start with just demographic trends, a few things just to sort of hit the high points here. This is the entire region, a five-year numerical change. Now, this ended in fall of '23, because fall of '24 data, of course, is being turned in, but we can't get it probably until about April. And so this is the most recent data available. And what this really shows is that the blue areas, I know we heard a little bit earlier about surrounding districts that were losing students, the blue areas here are the areas that have lost students in the last five years. And so we've prepared, we've prepared this map for almost as long as I've been with the company, which is more than two decades. And watching that blue spread outward has been quite interesting. There are some districts on here, this is still showing some growth in Capel. They gained 489 students during that five-year time period. I know there's another couple of these that are showing growth that have begun to lose students. And so do you realize that these numbers, that blue is likely to keep marching outward from the center of the DFW area? This is what your enrollment looks like sort of on a chart. I know this is probably not a surprise to you guys. It's been steadily downward a little bit. The most, the largest enrollment number that we could find in our data set was 2011, it was 26,400 and some odd students. We could look out to 2002 relatively easily, and the number that we had for the fall actually was the lowest number there since 2002, and it's about 2,200 students down from that high point. But it's not a precipitous drop-off like some of the surrounding districts may be seeing. Now, one of the difficult things for us to get at is the kindergarten enrollment. How many students are going to walk in the door for kindergarten? Because we can't knock on the door and ask how many three- and four-year-olds are behind everybody's door. They're not going to answer us. And so what we can get at is the birth rate by zip code of the birth mother. And the zip codes don't line up with the school district exactly, and so we break that using population points and try to get a good estimate of that. And so what we then can do is take the births and compare that to kindergarten five years later. And so that's what you see here, and you can see they've trended relatively fairly closely together, but slightly downward over time. And so we can look out, that gray line is sort of where we are now, and so we can look out several years for those one, two, three, and four-year-olds there. And we can see that it's a little flatter, and in a couple of zip codes in your district, there was an uptick. And so we have built in just the tiniest bit of an uptick in those areas that were sort of in the central portion of the district where those zip codes were. Something to continue to watch. If there were to be a little bit of an uptick in births, that will mean a little bit of regeneration there, and it's certainly something I think you guys would probably be happy to see. But this is how we try to get at those kindergarten students that are going to be coming in your door starting next fall. Going on to past and current students, I want to stop and explain here just briefly on this map and in basically every table that you'll see in that report, the data is gathered at the planning unit level. And so knowing that we were going to be doing zoning and planning and all of these things here, we very carefully cut the district into what we call planning units. And so they may be subdivisions, they may be a combination of a couple of subdivisions, but they do fit inside your current zones, and all of the data is gathered to that level. And so for the plant, actually, the data is gathered to the development level. It is summed and projected forward based on the planning units. And so when we, we can take the planning units, for each one of these planning units, we have the number of projected students by grade group for each year of a 10-year timeframe. And so we take them, we put them back into your current zones, and then we can do the planning based on that. Now, I mentioned the student geocoding. This is sort of how this looks, and what this shows is two years laid on top of each other. And sometimes these maps aren't very interesting, but sometimes they are, and you can see a couple of three different locations where you have yellow dots. And what that means is those are students that addresses that did not exist in 2019. And so somewhere in the north, you can see sort of the Highlands of Carrollton and Rosemead, you can see some yellow up in there. On the eastern side, Brookhaven Hills West, and sort of in the central is Amesbury, Coventry and Kensington there near 635. So this is where you've had some new students, new housing come in since the fall of 2019. And I don't want to belabor this point too much, but we also do have to take into account how students and classes are moving through the district. Occasionally, you will have a really large second-grade class, and that means that chances are next year you're going to have a fairly large third-grade class. So we have to understand all of that as it's working through. This just takes your enrollment, and it color-codes it from K through eight and from 10 through 12, skips ninth grade, because ninth grade is so often the largest class in the district. And it shows the brightest red where there are large numbers in that cohort. And so you can see some of these large cohorts work their way through the system. And so this is something that also has to be taken into account on top of, you know, any new development that's coming in, or any of the attrition and retention things that are going on. And something very vital for us to understand is how many students are emanating from each one of the single-family or the multifamily units in the district. Right now, the single-family ratio for you all is a .31, and the multifamily ratio is a .25. Now, that single-family ratio is very low for most of our clients. Most people may assume that, you know, how many kids are you going to have in a house? You're going to have two. Well, they're not all enrolled in the school district at that same point in time. I've got two kids, but they're in college. And so if somebody were measuring me, my house would count as a zero, and that zero has to be averaged in with everybody else. Also, anybody that's transferring out, anybody that's homeschooling, anybody that's charter schooling counts as a zero. And so that ratio is a .31. Now, that is the average for the district, and we don't actually use that for anything except for the creation of this slide. We have it broken down in the report by subdivision. And so you can see that on one end, you've got nine subdivisions that have fewer than .05 students per home. And then on the flip side, you've got four that are greater than .75 students. You've got greater than three-quarters of a student in every house. And those four, I did notice when I was looking this up, that the median age of all of those was sort of in the 60s and 70s for those that have the highest ratios of students per house. Now, any new developments that are coming in, we do not just assign a .31 to any new development that's coming in. We try to understand what that development looks like, whether it's single-family or multifamily, and we assign a ratio based on the ratios that we are seeing on the ground. And then alternative educational opportunities. I know that this is, this is what we've started calling charter schools, private schools, homeschooling, virtual academies, et cetera, et cetera. What this map shows is it shows the charter sites that we know of today, both inside and outside of the district, that are pulling at least some students from the district. And so the size of the circle there shows the relative number of students that they are pulling from the district. The good news is that we are not aware of any other amendments that are planned right now to bring new schools into effect to the district. We study the amendments every single summer when they come out, but unfortunately, a lot of times they're very general. It may say, we're going to open a new campus somewhere in the northwestern portion of Dallas. And so that's really difficult for us to get at, because so many of the time, so many of the times when a school opens, the, most of the student population is from right around it because they don't provide transportation. The parents have to be willing to take those students there. So the good, the good news there, the takeaway, is that we're not aware of any others, but if and when any do come in, of course, that will impact enrollment. We are expecting about 150 additional students could enter charters. It's not because of anything new, it's from a little infill from about a half a dozen of the charters that already exist here. And this table is very similar to some of the numbers that we were hearing just a minute ago. This tries to take a look at where are all of the kids going? How many of the students that live in the district are attending school here? Some of this is current data, some of it is data that is from, you know, sort of last year's information that was available for TEA. We're showing about 4,000 charter students moving out, or students moving out to charters. Some of that is based on TEA's numbers, the largest of those we have contacted again to try to update that as best as we can for the fall. We also contact private schools. I'm going to tell you that neither of those are always happy to talk to us, because we're working for you guys, and somehow that's the enemy. And they also don't necessarily know where their kids are coming from. Private schools don't as much care that they're coming from this district versus that district, they care that they walked in their door. So these are best estimates that we can get at. We also see 824 students at other ISDs. Virtual academies, some of our districts have very large numbers in virtual academies. So if I were expecting any sort of an increase, maybe it would be there just based on what we see elsewhere. And then we've got, based on our accounts, about 1,300 students that are transferring into the district. So what that means is about 80% of the residents that are in the district are attending the district right now. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Susan to talk about economy and housing.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening. As we jump into the information about economy and housing, it's important to understand how this impacts housing in your district. We've come out of a season of very volatile interest rates, and that has absolutely impacted the housing market. We were down in the low twos with interest rates back in '21, '22. We jumped up to almost 8% last year. Those interest rates are stabilizing to a new level where the market is regaining some kind of normal activity. With November rates last month, about 6.8%. And while inflation is still above the Fed's target of 2%, it is flattening, which led the Fed to drop 50 basis points in September, and then again, 25 basis points in November. Further reductions coming in 2025 are anticipated, but that likely is going to hinge on the labor market, which is showing some softening with unemployment numbers nationwide creeping up. This impacts the home-buying market, but also commercial construction, which in your district means multifamily housing has also been impacted by this interest rate market. So important to kind of keep that economy factors in the back of your mind as we move through this discussion. So, starting off, let's talk about single-family residential, which honestly, new single-family residential is not the story in first-string suburban cities that comprise the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. Small infill development and redevelopment are more the story that we are looking for through this 10-year projection period. In addition, many of the, the single-family residential projects that will be coming into the district are more in a townhome style or zero-lot line, the type of higher-density single-family residential that is not typically what families choose, where they, you know, want the two-car garage in the backyard. So redevelopment is one of the areas that we're looking at. A, which is labeled on, on the slide A, that's Crosby Redevelopment. That is the largest single-family development that is coming currently, that's in, in process. This is a redevelopment at Crosby and Broadway. It's going to be a mix of single-family attached, detached, and live-work residential, and that is adjacent to the Mustang Station area. So that's the type of redevelopment that I think we can expect over the coming, coming few years. Also on the map, we have highlighted the ExxonMobil campus. I understand that this is a, of interest to the district because it is the largest single taxpayer in terms of property tax value in your district. There is going to be some redevelopment that happens. We don't have plans or a lot of information, but the city of Irving, in our conversation with them, did indicate that they would like to see this include some residential as part of that redevelopment. So when the, the group that owns that property finds that large corporate tenant that they're looking to anchor that redevelopment, they will be working on a mixed-use concept that goes alongside that corporate tenant, and that should include some residential as well. I don't show this on the map, but also of interest is attractive land that the city of Carrollton owns, sort of at the intersection of PGBT and I-35, right at Dickerson Parkway. They own some land there. It is encumbered by floodplain, but they are currently studying that property. They have engaged with that property, and their plan in their future land use is to include some residential there. So that's another area to, to be watching. So you can see on this slide, we've already mentioned the Crosby Redevelopment, we've mentioned ExxonMobil. These are numbers that we would anticipate in the 10-year projection period, and the numbers are very, very small, with the largest number being 139 units at that Crosby Redevelopment. And it's interesting to note that, that of the five listed here, all of them are in that kind of southern Irving, Los Colinas Valley Ranch area of the district. This is a heat map that shows the progression of development throughout the 10-year projection period. Again, the darkest red areas show the areas that have the highest amount of Again, the darkest red areas show the areas that have the highest amount of development through the projection period. And you can see by year 10, we're looking again in that southern area that's Irving and then along the I-35 corridor. And that's largely because we're looking at townhome style developments that will cluster along major transit roadways. But it's important to note that even those darkest maroon colors are still the, the factor in the legend there is greater than 25 units. So it's still a very small number. The, the story really is more about multifamily in the district. And Carrollton Farmers Branch already has a large number of, of apartment complexes. We're projecting 90% of all of the, the new housing within the 10-year period to come from multifamily housing. And on this slide, we show where the units are that are currently leasing up and the ones that are developing. I have those marked with letters on the map, but you can see across the district, there is a lot of existing apartments. And, and I want to pause here because I, there's a, a part of the study that I don't typically do for other districts. We just kind of know that older multifamily tends to have higher student ratios because it becomes a source of affordable housing for low to moderate income families. Newer multifamily developments are typically targeted toward young professionals, and that's what we're seeing in your district. These are mixed-use developments anchored with transit lines, Mustang Station, Trinity Mills Station. These are highly amenitized and quite expensive apartment communities that have very, very low student ratios. So I actually ran an analysis, and it's on page 32 in your, in your full study, that shows you the trend line, and it is a perfect downward line from the, from the units that were built in the sixties, have the highest student ratios, and the ones built in the 2020s have the lowest student ratios. And as we begin to talk about redevelopment, it is important to note that when redevelopment comes in and they tear down an old apartment complex and replace it with a new apartment complex, you will lose students because you're going from an affordable housing source to one that is pricing out the people that are living in those markets. So on this map, you can see Mercer Crossing in Irving continues to add upscale multifamily in that master planned community. Again, we mentioned Trinity Mills Station and Mustang Station are both very popular with young professionals. So what to watch, I've identified two things that I think that the district should be kind of watching upcoming over this 10-year projection period. The first is redevelopment. On the multifamily side, we just addressed that. On the single family side, you probably have the opposite issue. What I think we're going to see in this life cycle of young professionals moving into these upscale apartments that are in the pipeline in the district is that they're going to get married and they're going to have children, and they will want to stay in those neighborhoods that are familiar to them. Those are the people that are going to go into older neighborhoods and purchase those homes and renovate them and stay in the district. It's not going to yield an increase for those neighborhoods, but it might be what keeps those neighborhoods from declining in terms of student population. So the goal would be that they stay flat. So redevelopment, all of the, the municipalities that we talked with all said, yes, we are starting to see that kind of redevelopment coming into our communities. And then the other one is infrastructure development, particularly floodplain management. We mentioned that property that the city of Carrollton owns, and they are already in process, working on a study that will allow redevelopment or development on that tract of land. And the other one is the ExxonMobil site. There is quite a bit of drainage issues associated with that site, and in order to fully develop that property over time, they will have to mitigate some drainage issues on that site. Finally, just in summary, we're projecting about 6,200 new housing occupancies over the 10-year period, with 90% of those in the multifamily sector, 9% in single family, and then about 1% in other types of houses, which would be age restricted housing or build-to-rent communities. And with that, alternative over to Chris and Leonard, tell you how that translates to students.
Okay, and we're going to try to wrap this up. I know you guys have a lot to do tonight. So we're going to hit just the student projections here. This slide shows a little bit of a summary of kind of what we've already talked about, how exactly we go ahead and build the projections. We've mentioned birth rates being relatively flat, having been declining, couple little places, maybe a little bit of an uptick that we're watching. How that relates to kindergarten class sizes, we do have a little bit of growth in some areas that we're showing in, in some kindergartens. Regeneration, Susan has mentioned that cohort size. This is kind of similar to the aging of the current students. What do the students that are coming up behind the current kiddos look like? Alternative educational opportunities, of course, and then the new housing construction is contributing around a max of 1,000 students per year during that 10 years. And so I mentioned earlier, I think, that we developed three scenarios of growth. And so we utilize the one that is the middle. That's our moderate growth. That's our 10-year scenario, and that's the dash line there. Over the, over 10 years, that shows about 1,000 student decrease. So it's a fairly similar sort of to what you all saw this year. We also have the, the accelerated one there to the, to the top and a reduced one there to the bottom. The reduced one would assume that you don't have regeneration, that you have charter school or two open up that we don't know about. The accelerated one actually dips and then comes up, if you see that a little bit. And so that would assume more of a build in the birth rates and the kindergarten students increasing upward like that. And so these are the things to watch. We hope to kind of bracket in where you might end up being over time. Now, this, this is based on attrition retention rates that are occurring now. We broke it out by school in some ways. We broke it out lots of different ways. This was a major part of the study for you guys. And we've also averaged that attrition retention this year differently than the last couple of years, but that's, you know, kind of data nerdy stuff. But at the end of the day, this does not really account for a, a market change in marketing impact. We have heard of, of one district, I hate to say much about it because I don't have the raw, the actual data in my hands yet, but that had been losing a lot, has done a lot of marketing, and they gained students this year. So I'll be real interested to get that download from TEA in April and see how things look for them. So it also does not include vouchers though. So we have been very rapidly trying to gain information on vouchers and how those programs have worked elsewhere, but we have not tried to include it anywhere. It's going to have to be another layer that's laid on top because we don't know what that program might look like. So we're going to have to, everybody, I think, is going to have to be reassessing that sometime in the spring. Another thing that I want to really emphasize here is resident students versus enrolled students. We gather students based on where they live, but that doesn't always mean that's where they actually attend school. And so anybody that is transferring out, we are accounting for in attrition retention rates that are specific to the area. Anybody that is transferring in, we assume that that transfer rate stays pretty similar, and we assign them to the attendance zone, the little planning units where they're actually attending school right now. But then we also have to count for your inter-district transfers from one school to the next. And so we start with those geocoded students, and normally, when we're doing our work, we start with geocoded, and that's kind of what we normally deal with. But in the maps that you're going to see here and in most of the information there, we have gone ahead and included the, the transfer students on top of that because you do have several schools where you're adding or subtracting a couple hundred students, and that's important. Just a reminder here, that data is gathered down to that planning unit level, and so that's what you see in all of that. There's lengthy spreadsheet and stuff that we've, we've got shown in that report, and those are our little puzzle pieces. And then we put them together into your attendance zones, and then we can break them apart to do the planning, of course. This shows your projected students for the first year, the fifth year, the 10th year. We project for 10 years because it takes a long time to build new facilities if people need them and stuff, but we know that those first few years, the ones that are the most likely to be correct. These are color coded based on the gain or loss that we're expecting, and none of these gains or losses are very large. A lot of them are 50 students one way or the other, and some of them, if you look, they may go up for a little while and then back down. A lot of this is based on, you know, you can see the, some of the red there in the south. If you go back and think about the heat map that Susan showed, it's maybe only 100 students per year, but it was sort of clustered down in that southern portion of the district. And then in the northern portion of the district where we're showing some losses, you've got some schools that are, have much smaller kindergartens and first grades that will be replacing larger fourths and fifths. And so that all comes into play, of course. When we compare to the capacity, we're showing some pressure at La Valleta, but nobody, no, none of the other campuses, we're expecting to be a problem with being over capacity. And then this shows our utilization level, based on those numbers that I've just talked about, compared to capacity. And so the maroon is where you're showing the heaviest utilization of a facility. The darker blues are showing the lighter utilizations of those facilities. And if you see the decreases in some of those areas, it may be like in Ferno, there are presently 38 students in kindergarten geocoded there, resident students that live in that zone. You've got 61 third graders and 52 fifth graders. And so you can see how that can work through the system and net some losses over time. There are several others that are, are similar to that, and then those student populations, then of course, move up to be middle school students. And so you end up seeing similar sorts of things here. Again, these are colored based on gains and losses. You do see some, some gain there at Polk. Right now, for example, there are 373 students in first grade that live in that Polk zone, and you've got 286 sixth graders. And so, you know, we can see some of those things that are likely to work through. We do have to account for students that are, might leave along the way or choose to do different things. But nonetheless, we're, we're seeing little gain here, a little loss there. At the middle school level, we're not expecting any of the schools to be over capacity, and several of the schools are quite well utilized. You do, toward the end of the projection period, have some that are, have lower levels of utilization there. And then at a high school level, it's kind of a, a similar sort of thing. All of those factors come into play. When we apply the transfers to the high school students, all of the high schools end up losing students because they go to the early college high school that doesn't have a zone, so we count that as a transfer out to elsewhere. They may go to some of the alternative programs and other things. So these are the, the projections here. We are showing a, a bigger loss there in Creekview in the north. None of them, we're expecting to be over capacity, and the high schools are, I think, better utilized, but you do have, you know, one or two that are a little lower, but none of them are expected to be over capacity by the end. So then the next steps, the district's going to be using this data, studying your existing attendance zones, and I think your committee is going to be hard to work. They've already, you know, had a, I think, from my understanding, a really good meeting last night, and then we'll be doing some work with the district to move forward with their long-range planning. And so with that, I'd like to open it to questions.
Great, thank you. Board members, any questions?
She's in school again.
This will last.
And thank you for your report, very deep. But I wanted to ask you quickly, on your single family point three one and your multifamily point two five percentages, you know, since our pandemic, our southern areas of Carrollton, as well as Farmers Branch doubled and tripled up on families living in single homes, as well as families from those areas going, have to move out or, or homeless and move up north to our Creekview area with families that have big homes. So how is that taken into account, if at all? And, I mean, what is, is there a study?
We have other districts where, you know, multiple families, maybe siblings or something, living in a large home is the norm in, in areas. And so what that means to, to us is a higher number, a higher ratio of students. It doesn't matter to us if it's single fam, if it's one family or two families. We want to understand what's going on today in, in that neighborhood. If we see evidence or a reason to think that the situation may change markedly, then we could go in and pull some of those, those students out. But for the most part, it takes a lot of movement to, when you're talking all of the homes in the district, it takes an awful lot of movement to move that number. And so for the most part, that's a, a measurement for us. And like I say, we never use a point three one, except to make that slide. But we look at it specifically by, by development.
Another question is regarding our newcomers up in the Dallas, northern Dallas, northern, far northern Carrollton area. Huge, huge population of Venezuelans, double, triple families in an apartment, as well as down Trinity Mills before you get to Kelly, the apartments and the condos on the southern side, another huge newcomer.
We had, we had several, several multifamily, we, we talked about this, Susan may want to speak to it, that had extremely high ratios that we talked about.
It is very rare to see a multifamily that has a student ratio of point nine one, and, and you actually do have that. And, and what you're speaking to absolutely confirms that. And, and just like we said earlier, that those Class B, Class C apartments, the ones that were built up through maybe the mid 90s, do become the affordable housing solution for low to moderate income families. And we often see, just like you were mentioning on, in, in single family homes, we also see that in apartments. And, and so some of those high ratios, high student ratios that we're seeing in multifamily complexes in this particular district do indicate that we have maybe even multiple families living in apartment units.
And how does that impact the figure or the numbers?
It's just reflected in the numbers because we geocode the students to their actual physical address. So if you have, you know, if you have five students living at one address, it's still going to, to calculate into that student ratio for that subdivision or for that apartment complex.
And what about the students that aren't enrolled? Is there a measure for that, or you have no way?
We don't, we don't, we can't get at that number anyway. We can't get at the homeschoolers very well because TEA doesn't track them, and if they don't show up, especially like a kindergartner that involves in some program in Georgia, never comes into the, in the door, and we, we can't track them. We have no way to track them. So in an area that is, you know, has a lot of homeschooling, that ratio is going to be so much lower.
Anybody else?
Thank you for your presentation. It's very detailed. We had, our board had a joint meeting with Farmers Branch City about a couple weeks ago, and they mentioned that there is a new school going across from Brookhaven, so I just wondered if you got that information.
I'd have to look it up. I can find out. We have a lengthy table.
Okay.
Do you know what kind, kind of school it is?
And they said it was called Preston Hollis Special Education.
Okay.
School, but they didn't have any idea how many students it was going to house. So I was wondering if you could find out that information for us.
I believe that is one that is going into, it was an office building.
Yes.
And it's, yes, we do have that one on there, and I gave that information to Ben.
Great. Anyone else? Thank you so much. Wow, you've given us a, a month's worth of good reading here.
Well, good. I hope, yeah, I hope it's riveting.
Just thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, board, the next item on our agenda is now item five, our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a tool that the board uses to approve a number of routines items with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes all consent agenda items. The board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the consent agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any?
I'd like to request the removal of item five U. Consider approval minutes from the Board of Trustees' joint special meeting with the city of Farmers Branch held November 19, 2024. I'd like to remove that for individual consideration, please.
Okay. We have item U that we will remove for individual consideration. Anything else? Then do I have a motion for the consent of Ms. Brady?
I make a motion that we accept a consent agenda with the exception of letter U, five U to be exact, as presented.
I have a motion from Ms. Brady. Is there a second? Ms. Hatfield has seconded the motion. Any discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. We have seven yays, there are noneays. Ms. Canada, you see that? All right. Moving on to item six on our agenda, items for discussion and/or action. items for discussion and/or action. First item is number A or letter A. Items removed from consent. It was five U. Ms. Herbacheck, would you?
I was not able to participate in that meeting, so I don't want to participate in any action related to it.
Okay. So do I have a motion, Ms. Hatfield?
I move that we approve item five U, the minutes of the Board of Trustees' joint special meeting with the City of Farmers Branch on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, as presented.
We have a motion from Ms. Hatfield. Is there a second? Ms. Benavides seconds the motion. Any discussion? All in favor? There are six votes, four, one vote recusing. Okay? Excellent. Six B is next on our agenda. And this is water waste, or water management system. Mr. Moore.
Shackman, trustees, Dr. Eldridge. Tonight, we are, it's really a pretty cool opportunity. It's one of a kind in the North Texas area. And it's really exciting for us. Two primary portions. First of all, CFP was chosen for this. And in large part, it's because of the work of these three individuals that are, they're dressed up nicely tonight. They look nice every day. I shouldn't say that. That's terrible. But they are some sharp-dressed men this evening. Mason Drivers, our energy manager, Bobby Shaw, of course, our facilities director, Dan Lopez. Those three have been key in this. And then a second big aspect of why we're excited, CFP is the only school district in the area selected for this specific program. And it's Hydra Point. They're among the national leaders in smart water management solutions. They've got a lot of product lines that they, they help maximize water savings. They reduce operating costs and really achieve sustainability goals. And for us, we're going to be able to grow sustainability goals. This is an opportunity that we've not really ever had before. And the partnership with Hydra Point, it began in its infancy, if you will, I believe around February of twenty-four, when these three, and these two gentlemen who I'll introduce in a sec, began talking about a potential pilot program. And it's, it, we were able to venture into that pilot program at Stark Elementary this summer. It's, it included asset mapping, remote access from any internet-based device. And that remote access is something that we got to experience firsthand not too long ago. I believe there was a PTA after-hours evening movie, and a work order did not get submitted to shut off the water that evening. And with a couple of phone calls and a click of a button, we were able to, to remote in and turn off the water and minimize the, the shower that those in attendance were, were experiencing. But the experience at Stark has been successful. We've enjoyed it. And there's an additional opportunity now that Microsoft is partnering with Hydra Point. And we found ourselves and the opportunity to, to take part in that through our existing partnership, but also because we are square in the middle of North Texas and the Elm Fort Trinity watershed. And the growth around us is so exponential. And water is becoming such an important resource that Microsoft and Hydra Point are venturing into, into this. And so tonight, what you're going to see is a proposal that would allow us to extend the agreement to an additional twenty campuses and receive assistance from Hydra Point and from Microsoft for the next ten years, and potentially save what these guys estimate could be upwards of twenty million gallons per year throughout CFB through this partnership. So with that, allow me to introduce Ed Hodnett and Jeff Welch. I told them I would get their presentation up before they got up here, and I didn't do it. But there we go. Ed Hodnett and Jeff Welch.
Well, thank you for allowing us to speak, President Shackman, Dr. Eldridge, and the team members of the board. We're excited to be here tonight representing Hydra Point. Our relationship with CFB started in, in, really in twenty twenty-three, when your energy team and were introduced to us. And we started a dialogue trying to understand what the needs and goals were for the district. That, as Chris had outlined, culminated in a, in a proof trial to just demonstrate what our solutions can do, both on the eliminating water waste side of things, but also improving operational efficiency. If you're dealing with, you know, limited staffing and, and just funding, there's got to be ways to tighten budgets. We're leveraging technology to do that. Through that relationship and, and starting that, that process or during that, we were introduced to, or were able to, to strike a partnership with Microsoft. And Microsoft, to just put it bluntly, in their data centers aren't really able, they use a tremendous amount of water to, in that process, mainly to cool. And they're not able to really cut that back. So they were looking for a way to partner with public entities to say, we will fund your, you know, implementation of efficiency systems in trade for allowing us to, to sort of help take credit for those water offsets and, and reducing that water waste. So given our relationship with the team at CFB, we were able to introduce this idea, and that's where we're at tonight, is to, you know, present it to you and gain your consent to hopefully move forward, because it is truly a once, you know, it's, it's a tremendous opportunity. So you can see where on the slide that's on the, the screen right now, where the Microsoft data center roughly lies and roughly where CFB lies. It all falls in that watershed, and it made this a very, very attractive program to Microsoft. We're also working with them in other areas geographically where they have data centers to find similar partnerships that we'll be working with. And, you know, again, as we've talked about, we had a prior engagement with CFB. We were working on that, just to demonstrate our overall value, given your location, given the size of this district and the number of schools and your water use. You know, this fit that, that, or that profile that, that we were seeking for Microsoft. And that's where it's evolved to. And so, you know, truly in summary, what we're talking about is outfitting those twenty schools, at least initially, with the correct, you know, irrigation equipment and shut-off devices, flow sensors, so we can monitor what goes out, you know, on those campuses. The systems will be set up to, you know, provide for optimum hydration. We're not looking to starve the, the campuses for water. We want to keep their attractiveness high, because you want to keep your, your enrollment high. But there are countless small ways that we can save water on a daily basis, reducing leaks. You know, just adjusting that, those watering or irrigation schedules based on the most accurate weather information that's available adds up to significant savings. And so, again, everything just sort of came together to point at this could be a very good partnership, should the board decide to go forward with it. Other, you know, items that would need to be considered is, you know, you will see cost savings, not just in water, but also in labor. And the ability for your teams to be able to monitor and manage things at those individual campuses very time efficiently using their existing smart devices. And so like you, the example at Stark, you had an event, water came on, you know, it happens. But because of the technology, they could, could resolve that very, very quickly and, and not destroy that event. And, you know, one of the things that has come up in some of the dialogue most recently is, you know, could, not just, you know, saving money and water for the, the district, but could this be used for educational opportunities for your students? And we would welcome, you know, the opportunity to participate in, you know, the continuing technical education or STEM programs to try and promote, again, that sustainability aspect. Because demographics, although they're shifting, that was a very interesting presentation. We're going to continue to see growth in Texas. That's going to put more and more stress on the existing aquifers, on the existing delivery system. So every drop we can squeeze out of existing systems using technology will be a benefit. And I'm hogging this, Jeff.
Yep, keep going.
So that's sort of a general overview of, of, you know, the relationship. The district will be the primary beneficiary. We will be the technology provider and partner and also provide technical assistance, training, and, and overwatch for these systems to make sure that this program is a success. Microsoft is our, you know, funder. And they're the benefactor, or the, the, I guess, the, not the benefactor, but the philanthropist that is offering this opportunity to the district. And then we'll be utilizing local contractors to perform the actual installations and conversions of these systems to, to make sure we're supporting the local community.
So the short version of it, as this slide comes up, what we're looking at doing, the simplest way to explain it, is we're taking your old irrigation controllers off that control your landscape sprinkler systems, putting in a smart controller that's controlled by weather. So it's going to be adjusting according to what the weather conditions are and what that plant material needs, okay? Then we add in flow sensing devices that just go in line with the irrigation system. That's going to detect your leaks. Unauthorized watering, kids get in, turn open a valve, water starts going, they're out there playing. In three minutes, it's going to shut it off. It's going to send these guys an email alert to let somebody know that, hey, we got water going on. It's going to be able to address stuck valves, valve that runs all weekend long. No one sees it. We're wasting a ton of water. That stops after three minutes. So that's kind of the simple version of what we're looking at doing. And it's a very simple retrofit to do. We're taking an old controller off, putting a new controller on. We're not doing anything else out in the field except for installing that flow sensor device. But we're not dealing with heads. We're not, you know, fixing that type of stuff. We're not trying to optimize that. Right now, we're putting the brain on there, and that's going to control what's going on. Everything is internet-based. So wherever they have internet connections, a phone, an iPad, a computer, they can be at home. That's kind of what happened at JD Stark. Somebody was at home, just jumped right on there, turned that thing off, and they can make any kind of adjustments.
Well stated. And then, you know, Jeff has really kind of gone through this. We can, we can go through this in detail if you'd like. But the bottom line, our, our company has been founded on providing solutions to a broad range of, of entities nationwide. We've been in business for over twenty-two years. In Texas, other entities that you're familiar with that, that employ our technologies currently include Denton ISD and Dallas ISD, Austin ISD, Grapevine Colleyville has a, has a pretty large deployment. AT&T Stadium has our solutions on the outside. They don't water inside the dome. But you're in good company. And we have a dedicated team, myself and Jeff, and then other support assets that are here to help your teams get the most out of this. And then, so the timeline, where we're at, we have signed our agreement with Microsoft. We are moving forward in, in other geographies. We're at the, the point now, we're presenting it to the board. We need your approval. And then to finalize, and then the contract execution. And then it's really a kickoff in implementing these solutions between now and irrigation season next, next spring, for when this would go into effect. That'll give you the maximum benefit going in through twenty twenty-five.
So the big question is, what's Microsoft thrown into the mix? It's about a million dollars that they are putting up for this, okay? So it's a ten-year contract, where we got all the technology going in. All of our controllers have subscription fees tied to them. So your internet connections, your cellular devices, how it communicates, training, all these different aspects, feature upgrades, that's all included. We don't come back to you in two years and say, hey, we got something new. You want to try this out? It's going to cost you more money. It's all included in ten years, okay? And Microsoft's footing the bill. They're excited about the opportunity. They've seen our analytics on how we figured out, you know, where we're going to be at with savings. We do that all the time for many of our customers, and they're very accurate. And so they jumped on board. So they're actually putting roughly a million dollars.
Yep.
Into your guys' hands. There is no repayback. There is no, if it doesn't succeed and meet the expectations of the water conservation goals. It's, it's paid for, it's done, it's over with. So it's very, very simple, clean, cut, and dry. Water share programs are very difficult. You guys have probably dealt with ESCO companies coming in, doing toilet fixtures and electrical. And oh, my gosh, that's an interesting experience. This is very, very simple, cut and dry.
So that's, that's. Yeah, excellent. Board members, any questions? Start with Ms. Benavides.
Thank you. I have a question. A neighbor of mine went to an automated thermostat, thinking, oh, it's free, 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 free. But then she receives an email that states, we have the opportunity in at liberty to let you know when you can heat your house instead of seventy to seventy-two, or can't run it at sixty-eight in the summer.
Right.
What type of control is there beyond you, Microsoft, and whomever that might say, too bad, we cannot, we're in conservation, cannot water your plants this year?
That's, that's really not one of the, the aspects of this, because, because the goal of the smart technology is to keep your landscapes, you know, optimally hydrated, but get rid of the, that momentary waste. I mean, most irrigation controllers are about as intelligent as the last human that put their fingers in it and took their best guess at what the next thirty, sixty, ninety days might do to you from a water demand standpoint. So with this, the way the, the WeatherTrack system is set up, it will keep your landscapes optimally irrigated. There is no pressure to say, okay, let's starve them more. And if things look a little bit, you know, funky, we'll wait until somebody complains. That's really not the goal of it at all. So I don't know if that, did that interest your question?
When you talked about weather, what about Snowmageddon? There was no wind, and a lot of things went bad. How will the weather impact your system's ability to work? If there's no electricity, no wind, et cetera?
Well, yeah, and obviously, I was, I was here for Snowmageddon. In that case, we wouldn't be irrigating in, in any case. If we hit something.
But if it freezes it, pop, and then boom, we've got a.
Well, the, the good news about that is if you do have frozen pipes, the flow sensor that will be installed at each one of these schools will be able to detect that. So when things thaw out and that water starts flowing, if it's not, you know, given the okay by the controller, it's going to alert your team, hey, we've got a problem out here. And so they will be proactively notified.
Thank you.
So every day, it is adjusting according to the type of plant materials in the ground and what's going on with the weather. The, on the far right-hand side is kind of what we call ET, how we measure, you know, the water in the soil. And the way that works, the simplest way to do it is take a bathtub, fill it up with water, put it out in the parking lot. If it's a hundred degrees outside and windy, you're going to evaporate a lot of water out. Water level's going to go down in your bathtub. And once it goes down to a certain point, you turn the faucet on to fill it back up. That's what we're doing for every individual zone across your whole campus, based on how we program it. It's going to fill up that bathtub, maybe zone one, but zones three and four, no, they got plenty of water still. They're doing fine, because they're a different type of plant material. Obviously, grass uses more water, plants use less water. So that's how that's adjusting. But when we start going into the winter months, we will have rain-free sensors installed, they're wireless devices, and they will be done on each one of the schools. And so if the temperature does drop down to a certain level, that immediately will shut off all irrigation, okay? Because we're measuring what's happened in the last twenty-four hours to what's going to, we're going to do today. We're not looking into the future. So the rain sensor devices and the rain freeze will stop freezing, you know, irrigation winds freezing. But if enough irrigation goes on, or rainfall starts falling while the sprinklers are running, once it hits a certain threshold, it then sends a signal down to the controller and shuts that off. We call it a perception device. Somebody's walking their dog out there, and they see the sprinklers going off and the rain. They don't understand that we have smart controllers out there that are going to adjust the next day according, it rained and we watered. It's going to shut that off right away.
Brady?
Thank you all very much. It's very exciting. And I super appreciate y'all. And Microsoft are paying for it, so it's even better. I just, out of curiosity, what does twenty million dollar, twenty million gallons of water save us? I mean, like, as far as financially, what are we going to save? How much money is that worth? Roughly, just to have to be exact.
That's, that's a great question. Twenty million gallons, divide that by a thousand, that would be, you got a rough idea on that, Mason? He's a sustainability guy.
We're, we're all looking at Mason. He's going, I didn't.
I mean, gallons vary by our municipalities. Some, some districts or some municipalities, it's like, probably three eighty-seven per water, that's just a gallon. So take that times twenty million, you get a rough idea. But.
Different, different water agencies measure their units differently. Some are in, in cubic meters, and other are.
and other are 1,000 gallon units. But it's a significant amount of money for there to be an ROI where Microsoft will be willing to pay for it.
Yeah, no, that's, we'll figure out the number, get back to you.
Okay.
Ms. Garza-Rojas?
I just have one more thing. When technology meets this amazing thing, it really does good things, partnerships, technology. I mean, everyone's sometimes scared of this, but this is really beneficial for all of us, so this is wonderful. I know you guys mentioned it's at Stark, how many more campuses were you planning on putting it at?
19 more.
Okay.
Under this program. And where we had started before the Microsoft introduction was looking at a phased program of changing all the schools ultimately based on the amount of water they use annually. So that was going to be something that, were we successful in that, we'd become new for funding from other sources. This just is a serendipity that sort of materialized out of the blue, and because of our groundwork with your team here, it was just, this is a no-brainer, it's right in their backyard.
Thank you very much, thank you for the app, and thank you for turning off those sprinklers when they needed to be turned off.
Ms. Barnes?
I just have two quick questions. One of them, you mentioned if the water was left on for three minutes, there's a shut-off. Is that something that can be overridden?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
And just to clarify how that works, so if you've got a scheduled irrigation event and the first zone comes on, let's say a bus had cut a corner and snapped off the top of that sprinkler, well, it's going to be putting out quite a bit more water. The system will have learned what that zone should have been putting out, and it's going to recognize, hey, wait a minute, this is more. It's going to give it a couple of minutes to make sure it's just not filling the pipe, and then it'll go, wait a minute, we've got a problem, and it'll shut that zone down, it'll send an alert to your team. So that's how that works.
Yeah, I'm thinking more in terms of Field Day, and we're trying to fill up big buckets of water, and you were talking about a faucet getting turned on, or...
He was actually referring to how water, the depletion modeling works to just apply with the plants.
All right, excellent. And then my second question is, when you're talking about, you know, that it will, it can detect whether it needs to be watered or not, whether the ground needs to be watered, can it also detect that it needs, that it's not getting enough water? Like, in terms of that maybe it's not, whatever irrigation's working isn't working?
Well, I think I understand your question. So yes, the system, it's a depletion calculation. So as Jeff was talking about, it's sort of like having a bucket full of water. And so the system will just start to subtracting the amount of water that's lost to the atmosphere each time, and then when we put water back in, it sort of balances that equation back out. If it detects that a zone is not getting the moisture that it should, for whatever reason, it's going to send an alert that says, hey, we've got high depletion over here at the beds at Stark.
And maybe it's something that then we check, you know, or they check. Thank you so much.
And one other thing just to throw on there, too, is also the system includes an electrical diagnostic. So one of the other problems that can happen in an irrigation system is just, you know, and you've got older campuses, the wiring to and from can be a problem, the actual actuator on the valve itself can start to fail. Many times, that's not seen until you've got damage, that you've got a big ugly spot and a principal's calling and saying, we've got a problem. The system does an electrical diagnostic every day on every circuit and says, hey, the solenoid on Station 5 is starting to go bad, and let your team know proactively. So they don't have to do an emergency truck roll, they can just program that in when they're going to be there.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I have one question in terms of implementation. When you start the construction on these 20 facilities, about how long does that take?
Oh, you're talking probably two days for campus?
Probably two days, because we are cutting into pipes, and we have to glue pipes, and we're going to let that set up. But it's one of those things where we'll install everything, then we'll actually go to another campus, start installing, and then the next day we'll come back. So we'll actually probably do two, maybe three campuses in a day, but then you've got to kind of wait for the glue to dry, and then, and then once that happens, then we can go through and do our mapping of where all the stations are, where the controller is, where the flow sensor is, where the water meters are. That's all stored in a mobile app and on the computers. So anyone that has access, if they have one guy on vacation and the other guy's got to take care of his schools, he doesn't know where anything is, he can pull it right up on his phone, and he's walking around, there's a little blue dot on Google Maps, okay, that's the problem right here, and he's right there. So efficiency is huge.
Okay, so it is a relatively quick process, this isn't taking six months or...
No, no.
Okay, thank you very much. Board members, any other questions? This is an item marked for possible approval, so do we have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Water Management Solution Agreement with Hydropoint and Microsoft as presented, please.
Okay. Have a motion from Mrs. Brady, do I have a second? From Mrs. Garza-Rojas, I have a second. Board members, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Seven approvals, no negative. All right, thank you, gentlemen. And yes, thank you for being here. On our agenda, Item C, consider and approve the board legislative priorities. Board, we've all seen and worked with the legislative priorities for some time. I'm not feeling the need for us to read the whole page with all of the information. Is there any discussion or questions about that? Ms. Brady?
I was going to already make a motion, sir.
You were ready to make a motion, okay? Go ahead and make the motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the board legislative priorities as presented.
I have a motion from Mrs. Brady, do I have a second? Mrs. Barnes on the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Seven affirming, no opposed. The next item is consider an official resolution to vote for the nominee of Board of Directors for Dallas Central Appraisal District. Yours is Denton, not Dallas. We did not nominate anyone, we were slow in getting the information, and what we received came in after nomination period. So we did not nominate anyone. The gentleman from Garland who has been recommended and would have been recommended to us has considerable support, and I believe will be elected just fine. So I'm going to recommend that we skip Agenda Item D and go to Item E, which is consider official resolution to vote for a nominee of the Board of Directors for the Denton Central Appraisal District. This item is marked for possible action. Board, do we wish to take any action? Ms. Brady?
I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Mike Hefner, Hefner, to the Board of Directors for the Denton Central Appraisal District.
I have a motion from Mrs. Brady, is there a second? The second is Mrs. Benavides. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for the vote approving that motion from Mrs. Brady. See seven, an affirming, and no, and declination. Okay, all right. I don't know, we've got to figure, now I'm going to raise my, not raise my taxes, right? Due to various circumstances, Agenda Items 7, 8 were removed from the agenda and will not be heard this evening. We will continue to Agenda Item Number 9. I'd like to point out that Agenda Item Number 9 included two closed sessions. First closed session was Level 3 grievance hearing, and the grievant approached the district and requested to dismiss that. So there will not be a Level 3 grievance hearing at the request of the grievant. And we will then go to the other item on there, which is scheduled to be for the review for superintendent. So at this point in time, we're going to dismiss and go from the boardroom to the conference room for deliberations on this, and the time is now 9:20. You all are welcome to stay. I don't know exactly how long this will take, we will be back. So at 9:21. So at 9:21. All right, we're not back that fast, but apparently there is the need for us, and I did not do this, so we'll now do it. The number nine, the closed session, actually has several pieces. We were planning to cover them all, but so pursuant to Section 551074 and 551082, Texas Government Code, discussing notification to TEA about contract abandonment by teacher Sidney Polizek. Number B, letter B, pursuant to Sections 551 and 551082, Government Code discussion regarding notification to TEA on contract abandonment by teacher Lily Vickery. And then pursuant to Section 551076 of the Texas Government Code, security devices. We'll also hear a security, safety update and audit results. And then we will be looking at the superintendent's formative evaluation. And then we will be back after we have reviewed in closed session. The time is now 9:25.
We are back in open session and the time is now 11:29 PM. Our next item is to reconvene for possible action regarding items discussed in closed meeting. Ten A is consideration and possible action regarding notification to the Texas Education Agency or Educator Certification Division of contract abandonment by teacher Sydney Pulzek. Dr. Eldridge, do you have a recommendation? This says you have to read.
Are you ready for me? It is recommended, Board of Trustees, that in accordance with Texas Education Code, Section 21.210C and 19 Texas Administrative Code, Section 2491.14, the Board approve a finding that no good finding that no good cause exists for Sidney Polzek abandonment of her probationary contract of employment, abandonment of her position, and attempt to resign from Carrollton Farmers' Branch ISD without consent of the Board or designee on November 7, 2024, which was after the 45-day penalty-free resignation deadline and less than 30 days before the first day of instruction for the 24-25 school year. It is recommended that the Board submit a written complaint with the information required by 19 Texas Administrative Code 249.14J to the Texas Education Agency Educator Certification Division State Board for Educator Certification seeking sanctions for Sidney Polzek's abandonment of her employment contract.
Board, this item is marked for special action or for possible action. Does the Board wish to take action?
I'd like to make a motion.
Mrs. Benavides?
I move that the Board render a finding in accordance with Texas Education Code Section 21 dot 210(c)(2) and 19 Texas Administrative Code 249 dot 14J that no good cause exists for Sidney Polzcheck, a teacher on a probationary contract, abandonment of her employment contract, abandonment of her position, and attempt to resign from Carrollton Farmers' Branch ISD without consent of the Board or designee on November, excuse, November 7, 2024, which was after the 45-day penalty-free resignation deadline and less than 30 days before the first day of instruction for the 24-25 school year. I move that the Board authorize the Board President to submit a written complaint with the information required by 19 Texas Administrative Code 249.14J to the Texas Education Agency Educator Certification Division State Board for Educator Certification seeking sanctions against Sidney Polzcheck, a probationary contract teacher, for abandonment of her employment contract with Carrollton Farmers' Branch ISD.
I have a motion from Ms. Benavides. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
I have a motion, a second from Ms. Brady. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a correction for his employment contract with Carrollton Farmers' Branch. I said her.
Oh.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you. Okay, that is done. So with the correction from the motion, we'll vote all in favor. With a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. For the record, let it show that Item 10A, Consider Possible Action Notification to TEA Certification Division of Contract Abandonment by teacher Sidney Polzek, has had, that was the wrong part, you, I need to read that part, but paragraph is there. The next item is 10B. Consideration and Possible Action Regarding Notification to Texas Education Educator Certification Division of Contract Abandonment by teacher Lily Vickery. Dr. Eldridge, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, Board of Trustees, it is recommended that in accordance with Texas Education Code Section 21.210(c) and 19 Texas Administrative Code Section 249.14J, the Board approve a finding that no good cause exists for Lily Vickery's abandonment of her probationary contract of employment, abandonment of her position, and attempt to resign from Carrollton Farmers' Branch ISD without consent of the Board or designee on November 22, 2024, which was after the 45-day penalty-free resignation deadline and less than 30 days before the first day of instruction for the 24-25 school year. It is recommended that the Board submit a written complaint with the information required by 19 Texas Administrative Code 249.14J to the Texas Education Agency Educator Certification Division State Board for Educator Certification seeking sanctions for Lily Vickery's abandonment of her employment contract.
Thank you. Board, this is an item marked for possible action. Does the Board wish to take action?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Ms. Brady.
I move that the Board render a finding in accordance with Texas Education Code Section 21.210(c)(2) and 19 Administrative Code 249.14J that no good cause exists for Lily Vickery's a teacher on probationary contract, abandonment of her employment contract, abandonment of her position, and attempt to resign from Carrollton Farmers' Branch ISD without the consent of Board, the Board or designee on November 22, 2024, which was after the 45-day penalty-free resignation deadline and less than 30 days before the first day of instruction for the 24-25 school year. I move that the Board authorize the Board President to submit a written complaint with the information required by 19 Texas Administrative Code 249.14J to the Texas Education Agency Educator Certification Division State Board of Educator Certification seeking, seeking sanctions against Lily Vickery, a probationate contract teacher for abandonment of her employment contract with CFPISD.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. I have a motion from Ms. Brady. Do I have a second? Have a second from Ms. Garza Rojas. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven oh. Next item on our agenda is comments from Board members regarding posted agenda items. So, Board members, are there any comments you'd wish to make after tonight's meeting?
I would just like to wish everybody happy holidays and have a good time with their families.
Thank you, Ms. Benavides. So I, at this point, I determine that we have reached the end of our agenda and we are adjourned at 11:37.